Our first online speaker will be Victoria Carey.
Hi, sorry, I missed the.
No problem, you're going to be our first online speaker. You will have three minutes and we'll start the timer whenever you're ready.
We're good. Hi, my name is Victoria Carey. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I work as a stay-at-home parent with my three kids. My oldest daughter is a first grader at Caesar Chavez Elementary School, and we love it there. I'm also a leader in our state's chapter of Say Yes to Recession, and we are advocating for sixty minutes of unstructured recess for kids every day, for every student. Currently, I, well, my counterpart Allison Gregg spoke last, at the last school board meeting, and to be honest, I was a little shocked when my daughter started school and I found that there was only thirty minutes. Um, where did the play go? Current Wisconsin law says a maximum of thirty minutes of recess a day can count towards instructional hours, so I understand where that happened. This misunderstands the worth of play, and we are working with legislators to change this. I'm here today to say that our district does not have, we have the wiggle room to have sixty minutes of recess a day now, and we do not have to wait, and we do not have to extend the school day. Um, I will, I am happy to email that to you later, but I have an example where that can work. Um, many of us had as much as seventy minutes of recess a day as kids. There is a wealth of research supporting the idea that play is work for children, and it is very educational. We want to create a setup for teachers and students, kids to feel safe and encouraged to learn, to be lifelong learners. A wealth, um, sorry, wealth of research done by the Link Project and others has found that sixty minutes of recess a day, kids experienced seventy percent less chronic stress and anxiety. Seventy percent, another seventy percent of kids achieve age-appropriate motor development skills, like balance, fine motor development and cross motor development, like moving your hands from one side to the other. They are out there practicing social skills, creating play stories with events going on around them or things they read in books. Their math and reading scores go up. Perhaps we've done too much of a good thing. Sitting in class and doing lots of specials is great, but what these kids need right now is to be kids. Their specialty is play. We are a school district who wants a state, uh, who stated in our district's vision, all students will thrive, work, and live, work, and thrive as contributing and valued members of our community. Recession is a cost-effective way to grow a learning environment. It's my prediction that the benefits felt from more recess by kids and their families and our teachers will draw more teachers and families to our schools. When students thrive, teachers thrive, and then their families thrive. Let's continue following research in our district practices and get these kids sixty minutes of recess. It's break for play. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next online speaker is, sorry. Is Amy Robertson.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Amy Robertson, and I'm a member of the Van Heist Elementary School community. Over the past two years, more than a dozen parents in our community have used established channels, including letters to this board, to raise concerns about the school culture since Rebecca Stein became the administrator. Stories of a fifth grader talking about her special needs classmate being humiliated by her principal, an ambulance delayed in responding to an injured child, lunchroom discussion among students about their crying teachers, almost entirely reported by fifth grade parents, because they feel that they are at less risk of retaliation than the lower-grade parents. It's worth noting that some of these types of concerns were also reported during her previous administrative roles. Despite these ongoing patterns, we have yet to see a meaningful improvement here. Instead, both community members and staff have expressed growing fears of retaliated retaliation related to staff, school programs, and students, which has made many reluctant to raise concerns publicly. Dr. Gothard once said, "Safety is the presence of connection." That idea resonates deeply with me. Connection between students, teachers, and families is fundamental to a healthy and successful educational environment. At Van Heist Elementary, that vital connection is frayed. Our community no longer feels the safety and trust that they should, that should exist with their school. I urge you to respond to the emails and messages from myself and other community members. We are asking you to address the ongoing issues around inappropriate behavior, unfairness, dishonesty, and fears of retaliation. Our community deserves transparency, respect, and unwavering support for our children's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next online speaker is Ray Mendez.
Thanks, Jesse. Oh, good evening, all. By now, I assume that anyone on this call, or anyone in Madison, has watched the video of the horrific head-stomping beating at Madison West High, where a child, one of ours, had his head cracked, his skull cracked. Think about this, okay? Think about in the context of your kids, right now, all of you I'm speaking to. So this is a call to everyone who cares about Madison students in the context of this incident that is being considered an attempted murder in your schools, in my school. Think about the lives ruined. Think about your kids, again. You cannot protect them as this escalates. It's been escalating for years. I've been warning you guys, and you have listening sessions. Knives and guns are being confiscated every week, and there are bloody fights, literally bloody fights happening every week. Open your eyes, guys. Look at what's happening in our schools. Meanwhile, you're doing PR of rebranding and advertising this district. What the hell is wrong with you? The violence, the fear, the silence, and what do we have? PR. This is not normal. Is this normal? You want to live like this? So this is addressed to the principals, teachers, staff. You already know what needs to be done. You know this. You see the danger every day. You feel it. I've been in your schools. You've been asked to carry the weight of policy failures far above your pay grade, and you have done it with grace. Thank you. Thank you, Principal Dan, and thank you, staff of all schools. You deserve the authority. You deserve real authority. Clear policies and consistent support, not the paralysis and empty promises and talk, non-stop talk from you guys. I'm looking at you right now. To the parents, our job is to protect our children. That means telling the truth, enough of the Minnesota niceness, or Midwest niceness, or whatever that crap is. Demand accountability from these people. You're voting for them. You're paying these people. You're paying God knows what you're paying Gothard. Hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, meaningless crap. Do your job, man. Don't hide it. To the police, you are partners in this, not outsiders. You're welcome into my home, because I believe in you. The hotspots are not a mystery. They are bus stops, parking lots, and neighborhoods where students gather. You need training. You need trust, and you need the leadership to engage effectively and safely, not the divisive crap from you guys. Enough. I'm looking at you. You can raise your eyebrows all you want and call me not the nice guy and insensitive and inconsiderate. Yes, I own it. I would rather be insensitive and inconsiderate than have a child die. Do you understand? Nod if you do. Time's up. Cut me off. To the attorneys and journalists, your job is to expose the truth and protect the public. There will be much to uncover if this city keeps pretending the bureaucracy equals safety. Watch closely, report honestly, and hold every institution, including me, accountable, accountable. I know where the money's going. I'm following it. Follow the money. Follow the digital trail. Follow it. Look for the cover-ups. Look for the deleted emails. I know these things. Journalists and attorneys, go for it, okay? To the politicians and board members, leadership means acting before tragedy.
Um, can I have a point of order? Um, we are way past.
Yes, I understand, Maya. I do.
Please respect people's time, Ray. Thank you.
I, I am sick of respecting your time and anyone else's time when you're doing nothing. So what I suggest is you do your job. I have a lot more to say. I will say it when I'm ready. I will concede now. But I have a lot more to say, and I want your response, Maya. You've not done your job. Thank you. Good night.
Um, sorry, Ray. Um, I'm sorry. I didn't see the timer before, so we are about a minute over, and we have many speakers tonight who have taken time to, to come here and express themselves. So if we could follow up with you after tonight's meeting. Done? Okay, all right.
Thank you. Our next person who signed up online but is actually in person will be William McNeil Flowers.
Hello, Board. Sorry for the confusion there. Uh, good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Gothard. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is William McNeil Flowers, and I'm a West High School Social Studies teacher. I'm a fourth-year teacher, and while I'm proud of the work that I've done at MMSD, I know that I'm still a very green teacher. I'm here to speak about the critical issue affecting our district in the form of salary compression. This is a problem that sends a dangerous message to our experienced staff and endangers our essential mentorship structure and ultimately hurts the success of teachers like me, as well as students of this district. I am genuinely grateful that the district has invested in competitive starting wages for new teachers. It's part of what convinced me to join the district here. However, my excitement quickly turned to shock when I realized the lopsided nature of the salary scale for our veteran staff. By placing my first-year salary close to the level of teachers who have a decade of experience on me, you're devaluing the knowledge, expertise, and institutional knowledge they bring. It sends a message that decades of loyalty and perfected expertise are considered less valuable than a beginner's enthusiasm. Additionally, it makes younger staff like me feel like for our own financial future, we may be better off shopping around districts rather than investing our time in one community. This isn't an abstract issue. I chose to work here because I saw a community that could support me and help me grow in this challenging career. I know that I'm talented, but I also know that I wouldn't have survived my first year teaching without the constant aid and guidance of the veteran teachers around me. My veteran peers in my department have spent countless hours helping me set up my classroom, showing me how to handle my first parent-teacher meetings, and lending their expertise to almost every lesson I've designed. They are quite literally the most valuable resource I have and ensure that I don't burn out and become an effective teacher for my students. From rifling through their old lessons and observing their classroom management, I simply wouldn't be the same teacher if I didn't have their advice. When I was choosing to work here, I thought about what environment would be best to grow in, and I knew that because of the community that was built up in MMSD, it was the only real option for me as a young teacher. This is why I was shocked when I learned that some veteran teachers barely make more than me, a beginner. This is financially unfair and is a slap in the face to their professional expertise and the importance that they have in our district, while also eroding my faith in the district's ability to care for its employees in the long term. It makes me question my own future career here. Why would I stay in a district long-term if I would get a pay bump by leaving the district or leaving the district and coming back for a higher salary, um, or just continually bouncing around? If this issue isn't fixed, we will lose these indispensable mentors, the people who trained me, and the people who stabilize our schools. They'll leave the district that, they'll leave for a district that actually respects their commitment, and when they leave, new teachers like me will flounder, or turnover, our turnover rate will spike, and the students will ultimately be the ones who suffer the most. I'm proof that you're willing to pay competitive, competitive wages for new talent, and now I ask you to extend that equity to the veteran teachers who are holding this system together. We need them. Our students need them, and they deserve to be paid fairly for their years of experience and expertise. Please make it right for our veteran staffs and urgently fix the salary compression issue. Thank you.
All right, we have no, um, other online speakers, um, who are registered, so we'll move to our in-person, um, registered speakers. Uh, I'm gonna, number one first coming up will be Naomi Smith, and then followed by Andrew, uh, Brannon, I believe, and feel free to correct me on any name pronunciation. Um, for our speakers, just as a reminder, we have a three-minute clock, um, up here, and when you're at the podium, um, when you see the little yellow light on the, the little black box in front of you, that means you have about thirty seconds. Um, try to conclude your thoughts as close to the three minutes as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, President Nichols, members of the board, and Superintendent Gothard. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Naomi Smith, and I'm a bilingual resource teacher at Shorewood in my twenty-sixth year. I'm here to speak about the critical issue affecting our district, the lack of salary equity for our experienced staff. While we're happy to see competitive salaries for new teachers, the calculation to afford this expenditure has devalued. Moving veteran staff whose vast knowledge, skills, and institutional history continue applying to this public service of education, it sends a message that experience and dedication are not valued. I chose to work here in Madison Metropolitan School District on my third try. It happened during an incredibly different, difficult time in my life in another district. It was 2010. My partner had just become unemployed, and we were making the best of it, raising our two-year-old. I sold makeup to colleagues and tried to believe the second job would be enough, but it was not. In 2015, I came to Madison. I adore that I can use multiple languages in progressive programming and be honest about the politics here. I've kept my home because of the salary. My salary was calculated objectively based on credits I had earned. This was not the case in the district where I had been for the previous fifteen years. The former district created a salary step solution, worked sixty additional summer hours to step up, taking time away from my family. Madison teachers have been in the right, pushing equity for decades and being paid for their expertise, a fact that made it possible for me to keep my home. I can watch my children at O'Keefe and East directly benefit from school district where teachers really roll up their sleeves to make a huge difference, learning what we don't know and being critical of the status quo. My son is successful academically at East High School, and I recall an essay he wrote a few years ago on how the teaching profession is doomed to never catch up to any other career economically based solely on the cost of living wage increase. At that time, I objectively showed him my salary since nineteen ninety-nine. Each year, it has technically increased. "It's a labor of love," I told him. However, my son looked at my list of wage increases over twenty-six years and concluded something is wrong. Sadly, he can think of no reason to become a teacher. Before leaving my former district, I recalled the other veteran teachers vowing to never help a new hire. Toying with our wages is divisive and depressing for veteran teachers. To return to counting dollars is very disheartening, but I must in this compressed salary schedule. I came here in 2015 and stepped into wage sabotage in Madison. Still, to be part of the district, it's progressive programming, growing equitable, equitable respect for students of color and immigrants, our cultures and languages, and see how colleagues know their tiring hours inspire bright minds to live well. I am impressed, but please make it right and fix it. I came here and met colleagues in MMSD that left the district to be rehired at a better salary step level. Was I hired at the loss of a more veteran teacher's wage increase? I ask that you address this issue urgently, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have Andrew coming up next, followed by Carrie Bowman.
Good evening, President Nichols, members of the board, and Superintendent Gothard. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Andrew Brannon. I'm an English and multilingual education teacher at LaFollette. Uh, this is my second year, which means I should qualify as a veteran in like six months. But I'm here to speak on their behalf today anyways, specifically regarding salary compression. It devalues their work, their leadership, and their institutional knowledge, risking the success of future teachers and students. When I was doing my student teaching, I was really fortunate to have two veteran teachers as my CTs, Leslie Mitchell at VPM and Andy Anderson at LaFol, at, uh, O'Keefe. Each of them has been with the district for over ten years, and when I was finishing my ed program, I knew I wanted to teach in MMSD because of the work that I saw them do, not just as educators, but as leaders in their respective buildings. While I appreciated the competitive starting salaries the district offers, they weren't the deciding factor for me. I didn't get into education for the money. My CT showed me that this is a district where students are centered, not just their education in an individual subject, but in empowering them to be members of their communities. They also showed me it's a district where veterans take an active interest in supporting newer teachers. So when I got to LaFollette, I knew that I could count on my mentor, Darcy Pocat, my department chairs, Kate Schultz and Shannon Longworth, and all teachers who've been with this district for over ten years. When I struggled to have a lesson planned some days, to engage students, to process after fights in my classrooms, or even just to figure out how district central printing works, they were the ones who had my back. And at the end of my first year, when Kate Schultz came to me and asked if I was going to stick around, the only reason I said yes was because I knew I had that support system. Veteran teachers are the stabilizing force in our schools. They're the reason that we keep getting new teachers, and they're also the reason that we keep them. The outcomes of my students last year depended on these veteran teachers. They continue to depend on their expertise, their leadership, and their knowledge. The work that they do to support their own classes, as well as their mentees, their teams, and their departments is unquantifiable. Right now, they're investing more into this district than their district is investing into them. Prioritizing salary equity for experienced teachers who mentor and guard our entire staff is the best way to ensure long-term health of the district and our students. I ask that you take steps to address this immediately. Thank you for listening.
But following Carrie, and welcome on up, Carrie, will be Eric Eifler, or Eifer, sorry, pronunciation.
Um, good evening, Dr. Gothard, President Nichols, and board members. Um, I've got trifocals and cataracts, so, okay. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm demoralized. I was hired in 2004 with two master's degrees and a significant student loan debt as a first-generation college graduate. However, I landed my dream job at West High School, coming in at the top of the salary table at Level Seven. I worked three jobs, most of my twenty-one years of public service at West High School, night school from 2006 to 2019, as well as summer school. I paid off, um, I recently was informed that my, that night school doesn't factor into my retirement either. Um, I was informed recently, oh, I paid off my student loans during the pandemic with assistance from the Public Forgiveness Program for Teachers. I was elated, but I was still working two to three jobs these past four years in order to make ends meet, even with the, um, cost of living increases. Last spring, I overheard a colleague talking about their salary and how they were retiring now that they had five years in MMSD. I usually never look up salaries, but since salaries are public, I did, and much to my chagrin, this colleague was making ten thousand more than my, less, less, with less education and less years of service in the MMSD. I was incensed. Yes, I taught through Act Ten and made adjustments when I lost Cadillac insurance and tightened up my budget. Being undermined by Governor Walker and the legislature is one thing, but being undermined by your own human resources office is another thing. I am honored to teach my idealistic and inquisitive students at West High School. However, this being my twenty-first year, I have thirty-four students in a freshman classroom. Thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-one, and thirty in my nine, ninth, ninth grade, um, four sections. I recently gave students a summative test with both objective and primary source analysis. Over the fall break weekend, I spent two hours and twenty minutes simply grading and entering the grades in IC. I haven't even touched the written portion, which includes reading questions and written responses. We are simply asked to do more and more with the, for a salary that isn't just. I don't stay, stay to contract hours. I spend an enormous amount of time planning curriculum, grading, attending my own professional development, and attend to additional responsibilities related to my employment. Moreover, I also am expected to write college recommendations, letters on a timely manner. I ask that you, as a school board, rectify the situation immediately. I receive climate surveys and email phishing, P-H-I-S-I-N-G, emails all the time. I wish these individuals responsible, responsible for these surveys and phishing emails would join us in the classroom. Join us in the classroom. Lower these, um, numbers of the school, how many students are in the school classroom. Let's lower class sizes and allow for more individual assistance with students that have reading issues and need holistic attention. These surveys and phishing emails are an affront as we are working diligently to be the best teachers we can be. Do the right thing.
Coming up next is Eric. I think it's Eifler or Eifer. I've heard. Sorry about that. And then following will be Sandra Campos Diaz.
Uh, hi, uh, my name's Eric Eifler. I'm here tonight, uh, representing Operation Fresh Start, uh, just for a little interlude. I'm, uh, here in recognition and appreciation of the partnership, uh, that, uh, under OIR, uh, that is the legacy program. And I just wanted to provide a brief update, and then I'm gonna get right out of the way. But, uh, over the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, uh, together, we produced, uh, we opened doors for forty-two young people, uh, with their high school diplomas, uh, in this, in, in this partnership, eighty percent of whom went on to either post-secondary employment or education, uh, six of whom are specifically enrolled in Madison College or other post-secondary education right now. Um, just for a little context, uh, the demographic breakdown that we work with at OFS, we've got forty-nine. got 49 co-enrolled students currently. We, 33% of those students have IEPs, 33% are English learners. We've got 58% who identify as Black or African-American, and 82% who identify their race or ethnicity as a category other than white. And we have, we've increased up to a 27% of female participants in the program, which for work program, like a work-focused program, we're working on increasing that number. And then going into this next year, I wanted to just mention that we just ran our first cohort of a new credential on solar installation, the 22 people participated in, participated in, there's another one coming up in November. And I'm looking forward to rolling into the rest of this year and next year in this partnership. Thanks for the support.
Thank you. Next, we have Sandra Campos Diaz, and then following will be Drew Cole.
Buenas noches, President Nichols. Buenas noches, Dr. Yo Gothard, y buenas noches, miembros de la junta directiva. Muchas gracias por darme la oportunidad de hablar esta noche. I am Sandra Campos. I am a science and multilingual education teacher at LaFollette High School. I am here to talk about the impact of salary compression affecting me and many of my colleagues. Upon learning about this issue, I immediately recognized its unfair nature. It affects morale, encourages turnover, and ultimately hurts our students. We support competitive salaries for new teachers. However, we would also like to see salaries of veteran teachers match that competitive salary schedule. Having a mismatch devalues our knowledge, skills, investment in professional development, and institutional history that long-serving educators bring to our schools every day. This sends a message that experience and dedication is not valued. I have been working with MMSD for 12 years. I have also experienced other school districts in Wisconsin. I choose to stay here in MMSD because of its commitment to an equitable education system. Based on my experience, I can say that other districts are not as equipped to address inequity. I love working with our students, and I love working with the MMSD colleagues that I have and I've had in the past. However, working in MMSD has also required me to invest money and time for additional teacher certifications. My plan had always been to teach science to high school students. My certifications to teach science should have been enough qualifications, but MMSD wanted me for my bilingual skills to fill positions in the dual-language immersion program. I was required to become certified in regular education, for which I did not receive compensation, and also to invest in bilingual education certifications, for which I did not receive tuition reimbursement. I still value those learning experiences because they have contributed to my ability to move student success forward in my classroom, in team collaborations, and in professional development. Nonetheless, I can't avoid feeling unappreciated knowing that my salary has been compressed. This is a sentiment that cannot be ignored. If I was hired right now by MMSD using HR policy, all of my years of experienced teaching would match up with a corresponding letter for my level, as is the case of other colleagues. MMSD can and should fix this issue because prioritizing salary equity for experienced staff is the best way to ensure the long-term health of our district and the continued success of our students. Muchas gracias.
All right, we have Drew Cole coming on up, and then Kate Schultz will follow.
Good evening, President Nichols, Superintendent Gothard, and the rest of our esteemed board. I'm here tonight to speak in solidarity with the veteran staff of the Madison Metropolitan School District. My name is Drew Cole, and I'm now a second-year Spanish teacher at LaFollette High School. Although, as the saying goes, it's not my first rodeo, it's actually my 10th year as an educator, I'm also a proud member of Madison Teachers Incorporated, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my fellow union members who have been affected by the issue of salary compression. I chose to work in MMSD because I love Madison, and after completing my rather expensive master's degree at the UW, the Madison School District offered me a competitive salary, commensurate with my experience, to help me pay back that debt. Unfortunately, I'm deeply concerned about my longevity in the district. If, as is the case for the veteran staff now, my salary becomes increasingly less competitive with time, one day I hope to also be a veteran teacher. And perhaps over-optimistically, I hope to retire as a classroom teacher from the Madison School District. The way I see my talented, tireless, and truly masterful veteran colleagues treated now does not give me a lot of hope for that future. Aside from the issue of staff retention in the long term, the issue of retaining veterans is crucial for educators like myself, who are either just now completing their education or coming back for more of it. Teachers must complete an apprenticeship of student teaching, and as an aspiring public school teacher at the UW-Madison, I have the privilege of working with two of the district's most talented and hardworking and longstanding veterans, Maria Brown, a 30-year veteran of Hamilton Middle School, and LaFollette's own Kelly Ferguson, who has more than 20 years of experience in the district. The lessons that I learned under their mentorship are invaluable, and they continue to support me with good advice as I find my footing here in Madison Schools. If the district is unable to retain long-term staff, the district will also be unable to offer a valuable student teaching experience to aspiring educators in the future, and that positive experience I had with Maria and Kelly was the main reason I wanted to work here in the first place. However, the final reason I'm here today is not for myself and my own future, but in solidarity with my fellow teachers and workers in my labor union. I'll quote another old adage, this one from the Labor Movement, to close with a statement of solidarity, "An injury to one is an injury to all." I'm not asking for a raise for me. I'm a teacher who's actually a grateful beneficiary of the rising salary floor. I'm asking for a raise for them. They deserve it. Thank you.
All right, following Kate, who's coming up, we'll have Andrew Mizurelli.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Kate Schultz. I'm the English Department Chair at LaFollette High School, and I currently teach English II, AP Seminar, and my avid kids are seniors this year. I'm here to illustrate the issue of salary compression in MMSD from my own personal experience. First, as someone involved in hiring new staff, I do appreciate that our district has increased starting salaries to attract new teachers and compete for talent. That was the right move. However, shaving off levels from the salary schedule but not moving veteran staff to reflect their years of experience, that was the wrong move, devaluing the knowledge, skills, and experience that veteran educators bring to our schools. I've been teaching in this district under contract for 23 years, but on the salary schedule, I'm at Level Q, which is 17 years. So my question for you is, which of my six years of service in MMSD don't matter? Is it six of the early years I spent at Sherman Middle School, teaching in the true middle school model, where I learned how to build classroom community, how to co-teach, role-blend, and serve students with diverse needs in a fully inclusive setting? Maybe it was six of my later years at Sherman, serving on SBLT, ACP cell, and equity teams, MMSD's literacy leadership team, K-12 literacy advisory committee, two different superintendents, super advisory, teacher advisory groups, and leadership institutes, and consulting on MICFA Challenge Project SOFOX curriculum. Maybe it was those years, maybe six of the last years at LaFollette, working on cross-functional pathways and nine, 10 success teams, becoming an avid elective teacher, learning the ways of AP capstone, designing MMSDs, English 1 and 2 scope and sequence, serving on instructional leadership team, and standards-based design team, and leading my PLC in my department. This district has invested in me, my personal, my professional learning, from courageous conversations, loving logic, caring classrooms, restorative justice training, to culturally responsive teaching in the brain, equity framework for responsive literacy, developmental designs, and abolitionist teaching, all of that, unpacking, listening, teaching, or learning. I carry that with me in all of the interactions I have with students every single day, every interaction, that is within me. I carry that with me while I'm mentoring staff and training student teachers, some of whom have gone on themselves to become leaders in this district. In any six-year span, which consists of 1,152 contract days of 9,216 hours, I've spent every one of those and so many more thoughtfully planning, meaningful learning experiences, meticulously preparing and scaffolding materials so that all of my students can access rigorous instruction, and most importantly, teaching my students with purpose, to empower them, to use their voices, and see themselves as change agents. Honestly, it's uncomfortable for me to be up here advocating for myself when there are so many far more consequential battles that we are fighting every day. It's my hope that you'll do the right thing and address the issue of salary equity and allow us to conserve our energy to fight for our students, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the right to public education itself. Thank you.
Good evening, board and everyone. My name is Andrea Mizurelli. I'm the Madison Teachers, Inc. president, and I'm here to speak again on the salary compression. We're all here and confused on what the holdup is. Last September 2024, HR presented slides of the history of the compression with cutting off the levels. It informed about the half-steps compression as well. Also, there was discussion in slides about the next steps, which states developing a 2025-26 budget amendment to establish the timeline and to fix it. It wasn't included in the 25-26 budget that you're voting on tonight. With that, HR knows with the cutoff levels, MMSD could use their database in a few clicks and have all the hire dates for people who are affected. DPI has the database as well, and it could be done fast. Yet, there's nothing in the budget that you're voting on tonight to fix it, even though over a year ago you talked about it and having a timeline to fix it for this budget and future budgets. According to your slides presented a couple weeks ago, around 44% of teachers are in zero to five years in MMSD. That's almost one out of two teachers. Some of these people new to MMSD are making more money than our veteran staff who have been here 20, 25, 30, or 35 years, we heard from last month. January of 2025, HR reported to the board that from last year's new hires, that the number one reason that the staff applied to come here to MMSD was from referral from staff members. Number two was they were a student teacher who was mentored by these teachers behind me. Number three, they were a former staff member returning. Well, the joke's on us, because they were the smart staff. They could leave the district and come back and get all their full year's experience in a huge raise in their pay and therefore in their pension in the future. We have heard staff, we've heard from staff giving 25 to 35 years to this district. They are ready, they are ready to look at retirement, which is much deserved for all their honorable years in our district, and they deserve to retire with the pay that they deserve, which affects their pension and the rest of their lives. These staff have waited long enough to fix the compression immediately.
Thank you. Next, we'll have, I think this is Naporsia Hamlin. If I didn't pronounce it correctly, please just let us know when you come on up. And then followed, following will be Asha, I think, Asha Green? Asha, thank you.
Hello, my name is Naporsia, and I'm a humans, human trafficking survivor, and I have, I say that to say with all I know and all that I have experienced and all that I've seen, it was very hard to sign my daughter up in MMSD, but I did, and the teachers were lifesavers. However, I think more needs to be done about the hiring process, and we shouldn't be letting people with violent paths and felony records, oh my gosh, sorry, on, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous, violent offenders shouldn't be allowed in schools, just like the incident that just happened at White Horse Middle School. That's all. I don't think I'm gonna need this today. Um. I want you to close your eyes and imagine. I want you to close your eyes and imagine you're a Black disabled woman with a Black disabled child. After 13 years of his life, you've learned to take every precautionary measure to ensure he's safe when he's out of your sight. Imagine sending your child off to school like a normal day, only for him to come home, not himself. He's scared for his life and the lives of his family. Imagine your child then requests to be taken to the hospital because he's in pain. Close your eyes, now open your ears. Your child utters the words that he has been sexually abused by the very people that's supposed to guide, teach, and protect. Imagine checking your child's AngelSense tag, and it displays that your child has not been on the school's property for over, a little bit over an hour, and no, he's not at the age where he's skipping school. You're unaware of any schedule changes or off-campus trips that have been scheduled for the day. As a concerned parent, you go to the school to get some answers as your child's whereabouts during the school hours. You go to the school and you get greeted by the school secretary who refuses to listen because, I'm sorry, who refuses to listen to you or hear your concerns regarding your child because you're deaf, you're Black, and you're a woman. Hard of hearing and was taught to be, or was thought out to be a problematic Black woman. Instead of trying to hear, listen, and understand your concerns, the police were called. You were removed for trespassing, no answers, no justice. Imagine being a Black disabled woman with a Black disabled child. Where's her answers? Where's the justice? What is MMSD gonna do to prevent these situations from continuing to rise within our school district? We didn't see too often that these issues are swept under the rug and no one's being notified. Why is it that the community has had to take things into their own hands to get some answers, so this child can feel safe? Where is the support? Where is the love? Being Black in Madison, Wisconsin is sad. It's sickening. Because she's Black. Because he's Black. Don't sweep this under the rug.
Next up, and I'm sorry in advance if I mispronounce, is it Kumani? No, I have next up Kumani Harris. And then following is Aishana, I think, Alexander? Okay.
Hello there, I'm Duck, and I'm the mother of the victim. That, so I'm gonna say yes. That, so I'm gonna say yes. I'm maybe just wondering what happened to my child. And being it, having the autism disability and not being believed, this really, I mean heartbreaking for people to, you know, can't go to school safe without coming home, can't tell what's going on, you know? And I'm gonna let you guys know that I'm always be my son first, no matter what. And to ensure he's safe from things from happening to him again. And I understand the public is confused right now of the article that went out. But I'm not here to cause problems or anything. I'm here to solve the issues and get justice for my child. Because he needs to behave and that's like, all kids with disabilities should be cared, I mean, to be treated fairly. And the teachers and staffs and principals should mentor, we have deeply background checks and stuff, like, because they're just hiding, you know, nowadays, you know? And it's hard to go home and feel like you trust this school, you know what I mean? So it's like, and I feel violated, you know, in every way. And it's just hoping that people understand that things can happen at schools, no matter what school it is, and no matter what staffs or teachers it is. But everybody has a deep secret into things they, you know? So I wanted to be aware and protect the disability kids of all kinds, no matter what. And I'm looking forward to get justice for my son for all of these things that's happened to him at White Horse Middle School. And things have been verified, so there's nothing that can be blamed for my child of the lies, allegations, because nothing is a lie, everything is true, unless I have to say.
Hey y'all, I'm Asiaana Alexander. I'm a youth leader in the community. Hey, LaFollette, I see y'all out here, L's up. You already know what it is. No, I'm just like, okay. Hey, guys, I'm Asiaana Alexander. I'm a youth advocate for Black Lives and Children with Disabilities. I just want to be the voice for the youth, be the voice you guys continue to look past and look over. White Horse Middle School has been known for violence. I've been fighting for the rights of students within the school system since I was 12 years old, yet nothing has truly changed. Only, only the way y'all continue to hide the truth about these corrupted teachers and principals within the school system. Several students came to me trying to express the things that they've been through, and I will be reading these things to show you the severity of children's mental and all these issues have, and how all these issues have caused trauma for them for the rest of their lives. Here is one student's statement who still goes to White Horse and is still experiencing traumatic issues. This young lady said, "I'm beyond disgusted, bro. I'm a student at White Horse, and when I brought up to the assistant principal, I won't say his name, but y'all know, I was being inappropriately touched by another student. That assistant principal pushed the situation off to the side and continued to defend the boy." She wished and hoped that the younger 13-year-old boy was okay because she knows what he's going through right now. How are we allowing the same person to harm our children in these school systems? Another statement is, "I went to White Horse Middle School, and my heart is breaking so badly for you and your child. I remember seeing a teacher assault a student back then, and then, and he got zero criminal charges from what I remember. The school has always been bad with teachers and staff, putting their hands on students and borderline grooming them. I remember the principal as well, and she is not a good woman. I hope that both of you get justice and healing, and the healing you deserve, and I'm sending so much love your way." Like, bro, somebody told me, I hope and pray y'all get justice for the baby because I had to remove my three children due to the abuse that they were receiving from the principals and their peers. Y'all see the pattern, right? Y'all getting the pattern? All this abuse, all this stuff that these kids and adults are saying? Like, this shit is real, real life happening today, still happening. And ain't shit changing about it, and I'm cursing because I'm mad. Like, bro, let me warn you for this next one. Even, okay, I skipped a part, and I said, and don't even get me started on the video evidence I have of that. I should play it to show you how you do, how you do it, how, my bad. I should play the video to show y'all how bad y'all been failing our students since this incident has happened. This lady has put it, full footage of her child getting abused at White Horse Middle School. She has three children that she had to homeschool K through 12 because of the shit that she went through. And let me, and let me warn y'all, I'm not, I'm not done. And I'm not, I don't care that my three minutes up, y'all gonna hear what I have to say because these kids didn't get to, get to say what they had to say. So y'all gonna hear this shit, even if my three minutes up. Let me warn y'all for the next one. Even though our children are warned, they have predators amongst them, and it's getting swiped under White Horse's rug. The old bodyguard was also sexually assaulting kids when I went there in 2013. That school's bad news. He asked me if he could give me a birthday spanking. A year later, he was on my Facebook feed for sexually assaulting a student. Another incident, me and a fellow classmate were trying to help this girl learn English. She was from Albania. One day, her dad came in there aggressively towards me and...
Hold on, I'm sorry, we, we have a lot more speakers.
He going to cut our fucking heads off, came in the building, passed the office, and knew where to find us. That's not safe. I don't plan... Okay, another statement on how this would happen was a fourth special harassment with minors at this school that we know of. The old principal, Mr. Pyatt, the security guard room, who used to work at LaFollette and another school then, Coach Ted, all have been fired for the same, convicted and convicted. So you can get all of the info you need. Don't touch me. You ain't gotta touch me. And I'm still gonna say how to fuck up people. Anyway, the fact that Oprah lied, that is a witness. I don't want to talk about it. All they took, we covered these elements, they say, all they did was make it sound so good. And then they have two thousand dollars in our experience, and it was an absolute disaster. He hit wall after wall because he couldn't get law enforcement to fully investigate the case. So after, after we got our own private investigator, this should go to show how nothing's gonna change, and they're gonna keep trying to run tail into the wall, but I'm not one for another that. And I'm gonna keep raising noise about this situation. And y'all will hear more, see, y'all know me, y'all know our, our... Stop it, too, they were born, so therefore y'all are being punished behind this family in the fact that we still have children being abused at White Horse Middle School. Fix that.
I'm gonna encourage everybody to take a deep breath. All right. Yes. All right, we will continue. Our next speaker is Sarah Danes. And then followed by, I believe it's Pam Brant.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. My name is Sarah Danes, and I'm currently a second-grade teacher at Sherwood Hills. This is my 23rd year as a certified teacher and my 21st in MMSD. So in 2005, I was thrilled to get hired with MMSD. At that time, Madison was the district everyone wanted to be part of. Jobs here were highly sought after and hard to get. Families moved here to attend our schools. I especially appreciated working in a district that had the highest salaries in the area, great benefits, and a strong teachers' union. To date, I've worked at three schools in six different job roles, teaching everything in my PK through third-grade certification plus reading recovery and ESL. I've also subbed way too many times that I care to remember when I was an ESL teacher, often with no warning, and the bell had already rung and no subplans. To say that I've been patient and flexible is an understatement, but I'm still here. Throughout my career, there have been many highs and lows, but I've remained dedicated to you. I've stuck, stuck with you through too many new curricula to count. To use a buzzword, I've pivoted to something new every year, but I'm still here. Act 10 was tough. My household at the time lost $500 per paycheck overnight when the Walker administration took away our full retirement benefit. It was a lot of money for us. Of course, we also lost our collective bargaining, which impacted everything, but I'm still here. Our seniority no longer affords us any rights. Veteran teachers can easily be moved grade-level positions and even buildings through a very opaque and subjective process. Years of service does not necessarily count when it comes to job security. So not only does my place on the salary schedule make me feel undervalued, I also feel very insecure about getting to teach what and where I would like, but I'm still here. No one chooses this profession for the money, myself included. I did, however, count on making a salary that reflects my credits and years of service. This summer, I was shocked to compare my current track to where I should be on the salary schedule. The district has saved $4,500 on my salary each year. So since 2017, I've missed out on $36,000. My son, a senior at East, hopes to attend UW-Madison next year, so I can't help but notice that this total is almost equal to four years of tuition at UW-Madison. It's disheartening to see that number on paper, but I'm still here. So I'm asking you to finally, please, fix our salary schedule and put our district back on track. I'd really like to say I'm still here in the future. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Pam Brant, and I'm currently a fourth-grade teacher at Lowell School. I'm in my 22nd year of teaching for MMSD, but I'm being paid as if I am my 16th year of teaching. I've spent nearly my entire teaching career in MMSD, including as a practicum student and a student teacher, with just a single year of long-term subbing in WSA after graduating from UW-Madison. After that one year away, I was set on returning to Madison to teach so I could be at the forefront of the best teaching methods and curricula in education. Since that year, the fall of 2004, I've been a proud MMSD employee. I moved to Madison so my children would attend MMSD schools, and I continue to be proud to teach at Lowell and have two kids attending Madison East High School. What I can't understand is why teachers such as myself, who have spent their entire teaching career with MMSD, could have a lower salary than less experienced teachers or those who have taught somewhere else. Veteran teachers have evolved immensely over our time in MMSD. We began teaching without any formal curricula and no common core standards to guide our instruction. Since that time, we have embraced the adoption of Bridges Math, DL Education, Amplify, Welcoming Schools, and Letters, and that is just at the elementary level. We have served on school-based leadership teams, supported school and family organizations, taken classes to further our expertise, participated in book groups and various projects focused on equity over the years. We have also taken on the tremendous responsibility of mentoring pre-service teachers and our new colleagues. This could not happen without us. We veteran teachers are the backbone of MMSD and deserve to be paid according to the years of service we have given. I know we won't or can't be paid for those years that we've been underpaid because of salary compression, but we need you to demand that our contracts be updated to reflect the number of actual years we've devoted to MMSD. Every person employed by MMSD is a valuable member of our community, and it's time the veteran teacher salaries reflect our commitment to teaching and growing MMSD. Thank you.
All right, we are at in-person speaker number 15, Jessica Sanner, or Sainer, sorry. And then moving on to Erin Proctor.
Hello, good evening. Lots of people sharing their stories and their truths, and so I wanted to add my story. I am a math teacher and department chair at West High School currently. And I was hired straight out of UW-Madison in 1999 at Memorial High School. And I have spent my entire career in this district. So if you do the math, that's 27th year. As I say to my students across two millennia, which is kind of nice. My second year teaching, the salary schedule moved forward, so the people who were hired that year were hired at the same place as me. And that's happened a total of, as you know, seven times. That, and there were six years that I worked part-time at Memorial and LaFollette. And I was credited half a level for each of those. That's not the current policy. The current policy is a full level if you are part-time. So between those two things, I'm 10 years behind on the salary schedule, which comes out to about $7,600. I can definitely think of some things I would do with that money. So not only am I not paid according to my years of experience, I have a colleague in our department who, I thank him for his honesty, was hired from some prairie. He has seven years less teaching experience than me and is three levels further down. That is not okay. Ultimately, if I were to quit my job, go work somewhere else for a year, or not work at all, doesn't that sound nice, and come back, I would make up that year of missed salary in less than 10 years. I don't want to do that. I'm a good bargain at my actual full salary. Two of my student teachers work in our department. I think a really healthy high school department has a good mix of early-career, mid-career, and late-career teachers. And that's what our department has right now, and that's how we try to hire it. We almost hired someone last June who would have had my same number of years of experience, and that would have been fantastic. He didn't take the job, but he would have made quite a bit more money than me as department chair, and that's not okay. I feel exploited, honestly, that my reward for staying in this district my entire career and not going somewhere else in Dane County has been to be underpaid year after year. And that's, I'm not just speaking for me, I'm speaking to all these folks here. And y'all know what's right. You know what you need to do, and you need to do it soon. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Erin Proctor. I am a proud member of MTI, and even more proud member of Settit Middle School. I teach in the sixth-grade DL I teach in the sixth grade, DLI math teacher. And one of the things we've learned is that you never let everyone sit for more than 15 minutes because they get real tired and don't pay attention. You all taught us that at one of our PDs. So we are going to have an interactive Me Too right out of DD. I invite you all to play along. Please stand. Stand if this applies to you. At school, I am there before my contract. At school, I am there after my contract. I have work with me or waiting for me at home. I have hosted a practicum semester or a semester student teacher. We are now going to do a quick whip around here on, please remain standing until I don't mention you. You have at least one year of service. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37. Your veteran teachers not only teach the children, they also teach student teachers. They also teach new hires. We should not have to make the same amount of money that a new teacher makes. That's rude, disrespectful, and disingenuous. Before I let you go tonight, I will leave you with the following in the words of my lovely and wonderful sixth grade students. When it comes to salary compression, you can't be 6-7. You gotta pick a side. Be on the right one this time, MSD. You can do it. Do it tonight. Thank you.
All right, next up, Amy Spangler.
That's a tough one to follow. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Amy Spangler. I am currently a special education program support teacher and culture and climate coach at Lowell. I'm here to speak about the lack of salary equity for experienced staff in our district. Salary compression impacts staff morale and encourages staff to leave and seek higher-paying positions in other districts. I could have left many times. I didn't. Our students deserve high-quality teachers. However, not paying veteran staff with their years of experience devalues our knowledge and skills. It sends a message that our dedication to our profession and to MMSD are not valued. Sorry. I was hired full-time as a special ed teacher in this district in 1999. Through my 26 years, I've continued to strengthen my skills, expand my professional knowledge. I've shared my experiences, my understanding of special ed law, IEP writing skills, and teaching knowledge with colleagues and countless practicum students and student teachers. I've mentored young special ed teachers. Some are here to support us. Some with absolutely no training and not even a license yet. And others who are just out of college. You know, I recently learned that there are teachers in our building and all across the district with fewer years, you know, of teaching experience, and they're ahead of me on the salary levels. It's quite disheartening when I've given MMSD 26 years, this being 27. In a position with an extremely high burnout rate. 50% of special ed teachers are done within the first five years across the nation. 75% are done in 10 years. Yet we have special educators that have given their entire career to MMSD, including me. That doesn't, that burnout rate doesn't leave many experienced teachers left to mentor those young teachers, which is why we're having to hire unlicensed people to fill into those spots. And I'm not saying they're not doing a good job, but they're at a huge disadvantage when they have no training coming into the position. And that is left to program support teachers to mentor them and experienced CC teachers to help them learn how to do the job well and to do the job right with all the legal ramifications that come with special education. And like I said before, I could have left, but I'm invested in MMSD. But MMSD only seems to honor 19 of my 26, 27 years. I just ask the board to fix it, please. We are important to the work that is done here. And, you know, the diverse needs of our students can't be met without educators at all the different levels of experience. I learn things from the new teachers, they learn things from me, and that's how we all get better. Thanks for your time.
Coming up next, Mika Orito, and then followed by Abby, is it Stupar?
Stupar, yep.
Stupar, all right, thanks.
Good evening to President Nichols. Good evening, Dr. Gauthard and the esteemed board members. Good evening, people back here. Obviously, I'm here to talk about some salary compression. My name is Mika Orito. I'm a seventh grade teacher, math teacher, at Senate Middle School. I've been at Senate, this is my 25th year at Senate, 28th in education. I have two children who have gone through Madison schools, who are currently at LaFollette High School. I have a, I'm a product, actually, of Senate Middle School, LaFollette High School. And I also have a wife who's in her 24th year at Senate Middle School as well. I'm here to highlight and continue on with this talk of salary compression. Obviously, for me and my perspective, this is a problem that undervalues veteran educators. It weakens our staff morale and puts students' long-term success at risk. I remember the first time I saw the grid of salary, and I said, wow, what a way to go, what a way to pay people. I can like figure out where I'm going to be in 10 years. It's actually quite sad. Ann and I were happy, though, to see competitive salaries for new teachers. The profession obviously needs this. We need the best and the brightest in our profession. We were not happy, though, with this idea that we have been compressed and that we are not getting what we believe we are worth as teachers. So not moving veteran staff to match this appropriate levels devalues our knowledge and our skills. And it really, for us, stinks. And I'm just being real here. To lighten things up a little bit, though, I will talk about six or seven, six, seven reasons why we think that you should address this salary compression. So obviously, veteran teachers have a lot of knowledge and experience, right? That experience is something that you can't replicate in newness. That experience is something that we carry with us to our schools. We're often on the leadership teams, we plan the curriculums, we write different aspects of the curriculum. We take the hard kids, we're on the committees. Yeah, we do it all as veteran teachers, including we mentor people. And mentoring both officially, I'm officially a one-on-one district mentor, and I don't get paid for it, but I do it. We mentor university students who come with us. I've had over 75 practicum and student teachers in my time. We are also members of the community. I meet the community every Sunday when I go to Woodman's. I see people that I know, former students, former parents. This is an equity issue that needs to be addressed. So I'm not in it for the money, but to be honest, my wife and I would go down about six or seven steps, six, seven, which would be a nice boost and would keep me and my wife hanging out here in the Madison Metropolitan School District much longer. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abby Stupar, and I am a second-year science and social studies teacher at Senate Middle School. I'm here to speak today about salary compression. This is a problem that sends a devastating message to our experienced staff, endangers our essential mentorship structure, and ultimately risks the success of teachers like me, and most importantly, our students. As a new teacher, of course, I'm grateful that the district has invested in me and having competitive starting salaries for us. However, I was shocked when I realized the lack of movement on our salary scale for our veteran staff. My experience at Senate started when I was placed there as a student teacher in spring of 2024. I immediately fell in love with the school community, a community that's made up of veteran teachers who are deeply committed to the success of their students and to supporting and lifting each other up. My experience student teaching is why I chose to start my career in MMSD. Now, as I begin my second year teaching, I know that I made the right choice because of the incredible veteran teachers around me who have given me a sense of belonging in the district and helped me and helped make me the best teacher I can be for my students. My mentors, Sean Tzinski and Mika Orito, have both been teaching in the district for nearly 20 years. I truly do not know what I would do without them. They go above and beyond to make sure that I'm successful and to make sure that I have all the tools I need to give my students the consistency that they deserve. They're the people I go to when I need guidance or just someone to remind me that I can do this. They've made me a better teacher for my students, and honestly, their support is the reason that this career feels sustainable for me. While Sean and Mika have served as my direct mentors, I could name countless other veteran teachers whose support has been invaluable to me. I would not be the educator I am today without the generosity, wisdom, and mentorship of the experienced staff in this district. The current pay scale in our district does not reflect how valuable experienced staff are in our schools. They bring wisdom and stability and spend countless hours mentoring new teachers like me. Dedication, commitment, and loyalty deserve to be financially recognized. If this issue isn't fixed, we will lose our experienced educators, the people who are the heart of our schools. And our students will be the people who suffer from this loss the most. New teachers need experienced staff, but more importantly, our students need them. Thank you.
Next, we have Tom, is it Blau? Okay, Tom Blau, and then Tracy Drell.
Good evening, everybody. I thank you for hearing us all out. First of all, I want to say I would not want to be in your place, the heavy stuff that happened at West High School and the crazy accusations at White Horse. First of all, one of those people over there is a coworker of mine, we go way back. And I hope you guys take a firm stand and be very transparent, invite these people who came in passionately, show them the evidence. It's got to be clear. It's, I can't imagine there's any truth in this, so please open that up to them. But I'm speaking on the same thing about salary compression that everybody else did, but I'm going to challenge you and take a little bit different argument with this. And I'll start by saying that we start with the truth that we all hold close here in Madison, progressive Madison, liberal Madison, that we're a community that stands with working people. We're a community that knows that education is the ladder to opportunity. Right now, across our nation, there's a government shutdown grinding on. Federal workers, janitors, scientists, air traffic controllers, Christ, I'm going on a flight in Christmas, and I hope they're there so I can get to Colorado and go snowboarding with my daughters. People who punch in, serve the public, and punch out with pride, they're told, go without pay. Many of us in this room, myself included, I'm sure all of you too, when you watch the news, you're all calling that wrong. You're looking at saying, how can I do this? This is wrong. If I were there, I'd be, bring justice to this issue. Because when you shut the doors on the people who keep America running, you don't just close a building, you break a promise. You tell working families, your labor is optional. And that, Madison, Madison School Board members, that's not who we are. But here's the opportunity. If we stand against that shutdown in Washington, if we say no, we're not going to let working people pay the price, then we must live that same conviction here in Madison, right now, in our own classrooms. Because salary compression, it's the same slow-motion shutdown on our teachers. It tells a veteran educator, someone with 15 years of lesson plans, 27 in my case, late-night parent calls, master's degree earned while raising kids. It tells that teacher, your experience is worth pennies more than a rookie's. That's not budget discipline. That's not tough choices. That is your choice. And it's a choice that we can reverse. If memory serves me correctly, you've already reversed this for one other bargaining group. You looked at the numbers, you looked at the people, and you said, we're going to make this right. Now, I'm asking you to extend that same courage, that same heart to every teacher in this district, especially those in this room, that this isn't about favoring one group over another. This is about lifting every educator up because when we pay teachers what their years demand, we don't just keep talent in our schools. We send a message to every student walking down these halls that your future is worth our investment. Your dreams are worth the fight. So tonight, school board members, let's be bold. Let's show America and Washington that shutdowns on working people, we don't do that. We open the doors for them right here in Madison, in progressive Madison, in liberal Madison. Let's end the salary compression for every teacher who's earned it, not because it's easy, but because it's right and because the soul of this community and our country depends on it. Thank you very much.
All right, next up, Tracy Drell, followed by Peter Thompson.
Sorry, I'm not going to be the Statue of Liberty up here, but I'll... Hi, my name is Tracy Drell. I'm a cross-categoryal teacher at Senate Middle School. I have had six children of my own go through the Madison Public School District. I love this district with great success. My oldest daughter just got her doctorate at Yale. The next one got her master's at Dartmouth. The other one, who spent a little bit of time in principal's office, Carletta's office, did get her master's at Queen Mary University in London. And the list goes on. They've all been very, very successful, and it all started here at MMSD. So, but I have to be honest, coming here again and again to speak about the same issues is exhausting. We continue to hear how much you value us and how much you care about us and the work that we do and how important we are to the district. But the reality is, your actions aren't showing that. Salary compression has become a serious issue that affects every one of us. We are genuinely glad that the district is offering competitive salaries to the new teachers, but it's so important that we attract bright and passionate educators to our school. That is so important. But what about those of us who have been there year after year, giving our best to our students and to this district? Retaining experienced teachers should be just as important as recruiting new ones. Yet, right now, it just doesn't feel that way. We're not asking for special treatment, we're asking for fairness. We're asking you to show, not just say, that you value your veteran teachers. Because if you truly care about students, which I really do believe you all do, you must also care about the teachers who have dedicated our lives and our career to them. Thank you.
All right, Peter, as you're coming up, you'll be followed by Jen, is it Raina?
All right. All right, well, thank you very much for your time, everyone. I know there's been a lot said tonight, and I echo all those sentiments. I am also a special education teacher. I've been teaching for about 28 years in the Madison School District. I started as an SEA back in... I started as an SCA back in 1997 and became a certified teacher in 2001. I spent my career at Senate Middle School, and I wouldn't change it for the world because I love it there. It's a great school. One of the things that I would like to echo is the experience part really does matter. I mean, it makes a huge difference. As a special education teacher, I rely heavily on my PST. And like Amy Spangler, as a PST out there, has been done more for special education than a lot of other people in this district. She's been there for trainings. She's been there to guide us, mentor us, teach us all. And there's a ton of experience that should be rewarded and should be honored because she brings a lot to the table, but that's one person. I'm also a person with some experience. I appreciate that I've had the opportunity to teach at Senate. I've been able to have 20 special or student teachers over the years, at least. I've been happy to say that I've been able to be someone that has mentored and shaped some of those people to be my colleagues who now stand beside me and teach in my building, and they're exceptional people. But you know what? That doesn't happen just by accident. It doesn't come by just coming into the job and saying, "Okay, this is a nine-to-five job where you can just fill it at the moment or at a will." It takes a lot of dedication and work to get to this position, and I've done it along with my colleagues. We've been out there. We're fighting those battles. We're in the trenches, teaching our children every day. And some of those days are hard days. Let's be honest. It's not always like a bed of roses. So I would like to honor that by saying, "Do me a solid and let's raise the salaries so we get fairly compensated." I've already heard that it's time to change those salary compression. We've been down this road. We heard people, we've heard the discussion that we cannot keep pushing it down any further. It's time for change to happen. We want to keep and retain quality people. We have quality people in our district. Let's keep it that way. Let's have our folks be proud to be at MMSD and say, "Yeah, I want to stay here till I retire. This is my district. This is where I want to be." Let's continue to make it that way. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Good evening. Thank you, board members, President Nichols and Superintendent Gauthard, for the opportunity to speak tonight on salary compression. While I have echo, I will echo a lot of the things that the people have already said. We, as veteran teachers, are happy to see that compensation for new teachers is competitive, but we also are fighting for our rights to be compensated fully as veterans. I've been an educator in Madison schools for 24 years, teaching at East Memorial and La Follette. I have also, I'm also a proud parent of a West High School senior. I love working in Madison. I did my student teaching in MMSD, and I wanted, and I knew I wanted to teach in this district, one which embraces diversity and meets students where they are so that we can help them reach their fullest potential. Throughout my years in MMSD, I have worn many hats, teaching every level of math from fundamentals and pre-algebra to Algebra II and financial algebra, as well as Spanish and social studies. I have co-taught literacy skills, physics, health, personal finance. And this year, I am co-teaching all five of my courses in my schedule as a multilingual math content specialist. I have coached over 10 years of Ultimate Frisbee players and trained countless student leaders in our Latino student unions and freshman mentoring programs. I have been a graduation name reader for the past three years and spent hours learning over 400 names so that when those students get a chance to walk across that stage, we get it right. So my classes are filled with multilingual students, students with disabilities, deaf and hard-of-hearing students, and students from very diverse backgrounds. Every day, I work with them to make math meaningful and accessible to them so they can earn credit and walk across that stage to graduation. But at several points in my 24 years of working in MMSD, I have found instances when I have made less than the new teacher who had just joined my PLC or department. It is discouraging to know that a teacher who has less institutional knowledge than me or who I was mentoring was making more than me. It's disheartening to feel that my dedication is not financially recognized. The salary schedule compensates me for 18 of my 24 years in MMSD. While I am hopeful that I will retire from MMSD, many veterans may not be able to afford to stay. Veteran teachers are your most valuable resource, and we want to show, we want you to show that you value our loyalty as teachers like me who have dedicated their careers to this district. I ask that you take steps to address this salary compression issue urgently and thoughtfully. Thank you for listening.
All right, next up, Sheri. Is it Sheri Watt or...? Okay. And then followed by Sarah Schwab, and then we'll be into our final two speakers.
Good evening, President Nichols, members of the board, and Superintendent Gauthard. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sheri Watt, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Lowell Elementary School. I'm here to bring attention to an urgent issue in our district, salary compression, which creates inequities in pay for our experienced staff. This is a problem that erodes staff morale, encourages turnover, and ultimately hurts our students. I truly appreciate the district's commitment to attracting new teachers with competitive salaries. This is an important step forward, but you are leaving veteran educators behind. Veteran teachers are the mentors, the leaders, and the keepers of our institutional history. And when our salaries have not been adjusted, it sends the message that our experience, expertise, and years of dedication are not valued, which undermines morale and weakens the very foundation of our schools. Beyond the numbers and the spreadsheets, this is really a story about people. I'd like to share a bit of my own experience to put this issue into perspective. I began teaching in Madison in 2004 because I believed deeply in the district's mission to inspire and equip students for success. When I think back on my career, it's not just about the years or the positions I've held. It's about the people who shaped me along the way, the veteran teachers who took the time to mentor me, challenge me, and help me grow into the educator I am today. I am grateful for all of those who have shared their experience, knowledge, and wisdom with me, and I am proud to pass that mentorship on to the next generation of teachers. Over the years, I have served as a cooperating teacher for dozens of practicum students and student teachers. I've taught 16 years of summer school and developed and presented professional development for both summer school teachers and fellow educators during my time as an elementary math interventionist. I have also been deeply involved in district initiatives, serving on the Balanced Math Advisory Group and the Math League Teacher Team, as well as the Report Card and Social Emotional Standards Committee. I also piloted the Comprehensive Literacy Model. If there is a way to improve learning for my students or for students across the district, I jumped in because I care deeply about my students, their families, and this community. When the salary schedule changed in 2018, I contemplated resigning and applying because, and reapplying because as a 15-year teacher, I would make more as a new hire than I did as a veteran teacher. Despite all of this dedication and experience I bring to my job, I earn thousands of dollars less each year because of salary compression. Veteran teachers are your most valuable resource. Please show us that you value our loyalty and contributions. We should not have to resign and then return to earn the pay we deserve. What's good for teachers is good for students. Thank you for listening.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I know it's been a long night, and I appreciate everyone's dedication. My name is Sarah Schwab. I'm a special education teacher at Lowell Elementary School. I'm here to speak also about salary compression. The amount of people are here tonight and speaking on this just highlights how important this issue is, not only to veteran teachers, but also to teachers like me who have only been here for four years. While I'm happy to see that I was able to get hired into the district with a competitive salary, it's hard to see that my colleagues who have mentored me over time do not have that same respect, really. And I feel like seeing that this issue was fixed for psych and social workers, I believe, a few years ago and seeing that the issue wasn't fixed for the rest of us and the other teachers, it's very hurtful. And I'm surprised that it is, that we're still speaking about this, even though it's clearly been identified. I'm a fourth-year teacher, so like I said, my salary has not been impacted. But the reason I'm currently working in MMSD is truly due to my student teaching experience. I went to W Madison, and I was able to student teach at Lowell with Karen Hall and Kathleen Chapel, two veteran teachers who've been here for over 20 years. I was a dual syrup major, so I got to do general ed and special ed, and they truly, they just did so much for me. They even helped me apply to the job at Lowell, which was so exciting. And I was nervous. I didn't think I would be good. You know, I was worried about my skills, but they really were so there for me and just encouraging me every step of the way. And since I've stepped on, I've been mentored by every teacher I've worked with. I've been in probably 10 different gen ed classrooms over my four years. All of those teachers, at least eight years or more of experience, which would count as veteran in this case. And all of these people have helped me, really shaped me and grown me into the educator I am today. Truly could not have done it without them. And it's hard. Special ed can be very difficult, can be draining. There's so many paperwork pieces that you just don't even know. Like, you go to college, they don't go over much of it. They don't have time. And then you get thrown into the job, and you're writing IEPs, reevaluations. I had one my first month of school. I had no idea what was going on. I didn't even know there was a thing called a reevaluation, and now I'm hosting one, and I was like, "This is crazy." But they just helped me through it so much. I remember my fourth day coming in in tears just, and they were like, "You're doing a good job." And if I hadn't had that support, I don't know if I would be here today. So I just ask that you really, really value these teachers the way that I do because I'm going to be in their shoes one day, and I would deserve the same respect. So anyway, thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Dominic. I think it's Johan Birkel. And then, all right, you'll correct, correct me when you get on up here, and then our last speaker will be Emily Miller.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dominic Johan Birkel. I teach at West High School. Thank you all for your patience tonight. I know this has been a long session. I've taught at West High School for 22 years, which means I've become one of the older, more experienced teachers at West High School. I'm actually not going to talk about salary compression, although I am in the position where I'm one of the teachers more affected by it. I'm not going to talk about it, though. I'm going to talk about the situation at West High School. We have three physics teachers. I am the only one licensed to teach physics. The others are on emergency certification, and they are doing fantastic for not being licensed to teach physics. However, a lot of the responsibility then falls on my shoulders to help, to tutor, to explain the physics, to explain some of the pedagogy. One of the teachers we have there is a former student of mine who is learning the craft as he goes along. What I'm here to ask for is to, to help me and the other teachers navigate some of the difficulties that come with the more recent change that happened when we adopted AP Physics 1. For many years, we taught math, physics, and AP Physics 2 at West. We recently adopted AP Physics 1, which means we have to teach about twice as much material in about two-thirds of the time. The test is May 6th, so I got to finish what used to be math, physics in its entirety plus 50% more in two-thirds of the time. The number of professional development days that we have in a school year make it exceedingly difficult to do that. My simple request is if we could reduce the number of professional development days so I could spend more time with my students. Thank you.
Hi. It's, thank you so much for listening to us, for serving our community. I'm Emily Miller, and I'm at West with Dom. I'm one of the gray-haireds, I guess, who have been there 25 years now. And yes, I'm going to be talking about salary compression tonight. I want to, I hesitate, though, because as my colleagues talked about, I think there are other issues in our district which really are more pressing. So if we could address the salary compression issue, then we could get on to the more pressing issues. And I also want to acknowledge, I've been at West for a long time, since 2001. I've taught in three different departments. I've taught over 20 different courses because I just kind of go where people need me. But I would not have been able to do that without standing on the shoulders of giants. All the experienced now-retired who mentored me throughout the years. People clap if you know these people. Ginny Kester, Keja Heizer, Susan Gavellberg, Lynn Hodges, all these amazing people who gave me a helping hand. And so now I find myself in a similar position. And yet, feeling rather demoralized because of the problem of salary compression. While I am certainly so appreciative of the 8% raise given staff last year, as well as the competitive salaries we now offer to our new teachers, by not moving veteran staff to match these new rates, it devalues our institutional knowledge and the skills we bring to our skills every day. I want to be clear. I am so proud to teach in MMSD. I'm proud to be able to team with all my younger colleagues, as well as numerous student teachers, and learn from them. But I also am able to help them with issues of classroom management, crafting lessons, building curricular units, and many of the small tricks for building community that I've developed over my 25 years in MMSD. I'm proud to have been able to build relationships with families throughout the years by teaching multiple siblings. And yes, in some cases, the children of students who are now parents and whom I taught oh so many years ago. Having these kinds of relationships, bumping into people at Woodman's, like the other guy said, builds the type of community that can make our huge comprehensive high schools feel less like a monolith and more like a close-knit welcoming community. However, if I were to have left this community 10 years ago and been hired back the following year, I would be making at least $4,000 more each year. Calculating my loss compensation, it adds up to over $70,000, which I have three kids, and yeah, college is expensive. A colleague in my department who was hired into the district 10 years ago and who has fewer academic credits and years of teaching experience is making a lot more money. And I will pause there. Let me just say, I spend... I believe that the time I spend with my 32, 35, 32, 31, and 29 students in grading their 159 essays and writing their 35-plus college letters of rec this year will be equitably compensated. Please rectify this issue of salary compensation.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. I do want to just say, as you all are getting ready to leave, thank you so much for coming out. Thank you for surfacing and uplifting what your experiences are, how you are feeling. Seeing the diversity of our teaching staff in the auditorium tonight is amazing, and we hear you about what you're asking for and what you expect and what you need. So that is not falling on deaf ears. I want you to know that. And for the speakers who also spoke earlier tonight about just concerns of harm, desires for children to feel safe in our schools, just know that we are deeply committed to making sure that our, every school and every space that our young people are in is safe, and we're deeply committed to that. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that because so many of you are here tonight. So thank you so much for coming. Let's take a five-minute recess. Let's take a five minute recess. Okay. Alright, at this time, we are going to resume our meeting. And as a reminder, tonight's meeting also serves as the public hearing component regarding the 2025-2026 MMSD budget and tax levy. Next, we're going to move into the approval of the minutes. I move that the Board of Education approved the minutes from the regular meeting dated September 29th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections or questions on the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, Maya's aye.
Alright, thank you. Alright, those, that passes unanimously. Next, we are going to have Board President announcements and reports. And in tonight, we have a couple of proclamations that we'll start with and then we'll finish up with some celebrations of our students, staff, and other acknowledgements. So to start us off tonight, Board Member Saravo, oh, I'm sorry, to start us off tonight, rather, Board Member Mosner Feltham is going to read the proclamation about gifted education. Thank you.
Thank you, President Nichols. This is a proclamation by the State Superintendent of Public Instruction on the Gifted Education Month. Whereas we are all responsible for the future we collectively create, all students with intellectual, academic, creative leadership and artistic gifts and talents must be appropriately identified, instructed, and supported, so they can immerse teachers who help co-create an environment that enables them and all their peers to thrive. And whereas just as giftedness comes in a variety of domains, it has no limits related to age, race, ethnicity, or national origin, economic status, sex, gender identity, or gender expression, sexual orientation, religion, multilingualism, or ability. And whereas collaboration between students, families, school district staff, organizations, community members, and nations serves as the critical foundation for supporting and engaging each and every learner. And whereas the Wisconsin Association for Talented and Gifted's 2025 conference theme of "Take a Chance on Gifted Education" is a clarion call for us to all innovate in ways that can improve not only gifted education itself, but the educational experiences of the students and families we collectively serve. And whereas the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction joins the leadership of the Wisconsin Association for Talented and Gifted, the Cooperative Educational Service Agencies, Badger Pre-College, the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators, the Wisconsin Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development as we work together to support Wisconsin's children with gifts and talents. Therefore, Jill Kay Underlee, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, declares the month of October as Gifted Education Month.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Board Member Saravo read our proclamation on National Parental Involvement Day.
Thank you, Board President Nichols. The National Parent Involvement Day proclamation. Whereas research indicates a strong correlation between student achievement and family engagement, whereas National Parental Involvement Day is observed in Wisconsin on 3rd Thursday in November to celebrate the recruitment, engagement, and recognition of the contributions of dedicated school volunteers and families taking an active role in their child's education. Now, therefore, the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education recognizes all the ways parents, guardians, and other family members are involved in their child's education. Be it resolved, this statement be permanently imprinted in the Board of Education Minutes for the meeting of October 27th, 2025.
Thank you, Board Member Saravo. We have a couple of other announcements. I'll start with celebrating our students. East High School's Journalism Students won 39 awards at the Kettle Moraine Press Association Fall Scholastic Journalism Conference with the school's Tower Tales Yearbook and Tower Times News Magazine each earning first place overall. They competed against 18 other schools. Congratulations, East High School. Alright, celebrating our staff. Belle Phillips Memorial High School teacher Miles Tokheim was awarded a $50,000 prize and a custom tool chest for teaching excellence from Harbor Freight Tools. Miles is one of 25 teachers from across the country to be honored. And one more celebration for our staff. Paulina Bravo Valenzuela, who's a dual language immersion program and Seal of Biliteracy Coordinator, was honored with the Yale Educator Award. This award recognizes outstanding educators from around the world who have supported and inspired their students to achieve at high levels. And Paulina was one of 61 educators selected of the more than 300 nominees worldwide. Awesome. Yes. And then I'm going to ask Vice President Pearson to do some other acknowledgements. Thank you.
Yes, our other acknowledgements. Thank you, President Nichols. In tonight's consented, oh, can you not hear me? I can hear you. Oh, hello. Thank you, President Nichols. In tonight's consent agenda, the board would like to acknowledge and thank all individuals and organizations that have donated to the district, especially the Dane County Office of Equity and Inclusion for their $30,000 donation to La Follette High School. The Thoreau PTO for $117,247,000 to support the renovation and improvement of the Thoreau Library. And then Dan and Beverly Schultz for the $25,000 to support materials and resources for students and staff at Gompers Elementary School. Thank you all for your donations.
Oh, thank you, Vice President Pearson. One, one acknowledgement got cut off just a little bit, so I'm just going to repeat it, which was the acknowledgement of the Dane County Office for Equity and Inclusion for their $30,000 donation to La Follette High School. Alright, thank you. And with that, I'm going to now move us on to superintendents and reports. Dr. Galther?
Thank you, President Nichols, members of the board, staff, and community. Before I begin tonight, I just want to acknowledge, you know, a couple incidents were brought up a little bit in public comments tonight. Certainly, the media's been very busy covering some of the things that have been happening in our community. I, I wanted to alert everyone that along with the Board of Education, President Nichols and I did release a statement yesterday that was posted to our website, mmmsd.org. And if you just scroll down in the middle of the page, it's, it's a large link that you can click on to read that statement. And I think it really does capture much of what I heard President Nichols kind of wrap up public comments with tonight in terms of the difficulties that we know many in our community are facing and how we, as a school community, can work, must work together to ensure that everybody feels safe and supported and can certainly do their best work in whatever their role might be in our community. So with that, I'll jump into some of the report for this week. First, last week I joined MSCR After-School Program as part of their Lights On After-School Event. It was a windy day at the Capitol, but despite the wind, it was clear that students were having a great time as they helped raise awareness about our after-school programs. These students are why after-school, access to after-school programs really matters. The programs help our students thrive. They build confidence, discover new interests, develop positive relationships, and strengthen their connections to school and community. Not only do our after-school programs support our children, they also support our families by providing the quality after-school care families need. And as someone who's experienced these programs firsthand as a student and as a parent, I know just how critical they are to student success. I'm proud that MMSD offers these opportunities at 15 of our elementary schools and of the staff who work with our youth each and every day. I'm also thankful for the neighborhood centers who partner with us to provide these opportunities. Next, in addition to our neighborhood centers, we have many other partners who support our students in a number of ways. Whether supporting their academic achievements, nurturing their social emotional growth, or creating a sense of belonging, our partners' commitment makes a difference. Recently, we celebrated our partners at MMSD's inaugural partnership practice, which recognized the many talents and deep value they bring to our schools, helping to uplift our, uplift our students. More than 100 people joined us for the first time event and it was excellent morning of connection and discussion. And I can share that there were so many in the room that we know, and many of you know Board Members, but they don't know each other. These are, these are organizations that work in the same space with the same children, but they don't often get a community like that to connect as well. So really looking forward to the power of this inaugural event and how it can help us build the future. So thank you to our partners. Thank you for all you do for our students and our community. As we purposely continue to plan for MMSD's future for our students As we purposely continue to plan for MMSD's future, for our students' futures, we know the importance of building collaborative relationships to help align the work we're doing. Our relationship with the City of Madison has been helpful and beneficial as we plan for what MMSD will look like five years from now, ten years from now, and yes, twenty years from now. Earlier this month, we were invited to present at Madison's Planning Commission. It was a great opportunity to highlight the strong collaboration between MMSD and Madison. We also shared updates on the two thousand and twenty-four referendum projects and presented on MMSD Building for the Future. I'd like to especially thank Madison's Planning Director, Megan Tuttle, and her incredible team for welcoming us and for working with us. And we look forward to continuing this really important relationship with the City of Madison. One area that I've been a strong advocate for is raising awareness about critical funding that public schools need. I recently served on a panel hosted by the Wisconsin Public Education Network to share their current realities of school funding in our state. Approximately forty people were in attendance, and we discussed the referendum, state budget, and federal outlook. Joining me was Dr. Jill Underlee, Dr. Julie Underwood, Dean Emeritus at the UW School of Education, and our very own Board Member Nikki Vandermeulen. On those same topics of funding and advocacy, MMSD hosted the Greater Dane County District Governance Consortium, which is composed of area superintendents, board members, and staff. As our public school districts across the state continue to face financial challenges, it is important for us to come together and present as one voice. This consortium helps us do, do that by bringing us together to not only discuss legislative priorities, but also connect on the relevant topics that impact us all. We discuss political advocacy, best practices in teaching and learning, and best practices in school district governance. And thank you, Board Member Saravo, for attending with me as well. Victoria Stewart, who works with us on government affairs, will be working with members of this consortium to form a subcommittee focused on legislation. And just about finishing up here, an MMSD team attended the Greater Madison Chamber of Commerce's annual dinner program with more than one thousand two hundred guests around. Jesse, I think we're one slide earlier. There we go. No? There it is. Maybe I might have ordered, but, um, anyway, this, uh, twelve hundred people are there. You can see just a portion of that. Imagine a whole nother side of the room filled. Um, and as always, the topics we're engaging, and we learn more about employment, economic development, housing, technology, climate initiatives, and the region's strategic vision for two thousand and fifty. Yes, I said two thousand and fifty. I was pleased to have an opportunity this evening with members of our MMSD team, as well as the chance to connect with many others. Building relationships is so important to the work we do, and opportunities like this help make those connections happen. And if you look at the table, you'll note that there's certainly senior leader colleagues, but there's also school principals that are there with us as well. And it was fascinating for me to watch how they're making connections to some of the things they've heard district leadership talk about, or they maybe read in articles, but for them to be there and experience the presentation by Zach Brandon and by, uh, guests that he had speaking, I, I think was an incredibly engaging evening. Really happy they got to experience that as well. And now we're rounding the bend. MMSD is proud to be inclusive and welcoming. Of all people, not only did we celebrate our partners this month, we also joined community members as part of Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month to honor their contributions to MMSD, to Madison, and to the world. We enjoyed music, food, and connection, and please don't think anybody was more important than our scholars from Chavez and Henderson Elementary Schools, as they did such a wonderful job showing us a few traditional dances. Thank you to Dr. Karen Manetta's Collar and her team at Centro, Justice Castaneda, with the Latino Consortium, LCA, our team, and all others who helped make this a successful event. And then lastly, I'd like to remind anyone who's listening that we launched MMSD in Focus. And this is a community newsletter, so different than our family newsletter, a standalone, uh, that's relevant to anyone who has an interest or relationship with MMSD, and it really helps us keep all of our residents informed, and you can sign on, sign up for that at mmsd.org. President Nichols, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Lots of partnerships in this, this past few weeks. Thank you for highlighting that. All right, we will next, um, move on our agenda and report on items that proceeded through the instruction work group held on October sixth, two thousand and twenty five, and I will pass that over to Chair Moldrow.
Thank you, Board President Nichols. On, in October, we discussed our data on students earning college credit and industry credentials. In addition, we provided an update on school wellness, including the superintendent's Wellness Advisory Committee. In November, we are having an update on our project with this, on our progress with the Strategic Framework draft, and will provide an update on the launching of our K eight math RFE. And we'll review our first semester class size report.
Thank you. Let's see here. Next, we will report on the items that proceeded through the Operations Work Group held on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and I'll pass that over to Chair Castro.
Good evening, Board Chair Nichols. On October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five, we reviewed our human resources update to the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, received a referendum update, um, and then we received the third Friday, September count for the finalization of the budget here tonight. Um, our next operations work group will be November tenth, where we will, uh, get an update on the attendance boundary review, uh, for forthcoming action, um, review, uh, plans for insurance, uh, food service update, another referendum update, and then finally, uh, ground ourselves and the guiding principles for the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget development.
Thank you very much. All right, there were no action items, um, coming through the instruction work group, but we do have an action item, as, uh, Chair Castro just said, that's coming through the operations work group, which is our two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six budget and tax levy finalization. So I have, um, two motions. We'll, we'll vote on them one at a time. Okay. So the first motion, I move that the Board approve and adopt the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-two six budget as presented in the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-two six fall budget book for the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting in the following amounts. Total revenue for all funds, net of inter-fund transfers, six hundred and sixty-eight million, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars.
Second.
Oh, oh, sorry. I didn't finish yet. I was double-checking the numbers. Total expenditures for all funds, net of inter-fund transfers, six hundred and seventy-eight million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Second.
Sorry. Okay. Thank you, Board Member Castro, and sorry about that, Vice President Pearson.
No worries.
Who? Your volume's coming in really loud over here. Um, all right, any discussion, questions, or comments on this motion? Board Member Vandermeulen.
I came in here, and I made a promise many, many years ago that I would support budgets that provided full coal, and I normally intend to keep my promises. In this particular case, however, I cannot vote for this budget, although I support ninety-nine point nine percent of what's in it. But because the salary compression has weighed on my heart, and I've been worried about a good month now about this, I just, I can't do it. I urge my board members to support it. It's not that I don't agree with the work. Please do not get me wrong. This is something I could not sleep over, and I have tried. So that is the explanation of my vote. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Board Member Vandermeulen. All right, Board Member Saravo.
We've heard a lot of people come here and talk about the salary compression and everything. Is there any? We have heard that there's been updates on that that has been a priority, and that things are being done. Is there anything that we can hear that can speak to as what is being? What are we doing right now in order to address that? And is there a timeline around, just so we can put some stuff out there for people who have, they've been looking at this for a very long time?
Thank you, President Nichols, Board Member Saravo, rest of the board. Yes, um, I've responded back to, um, several teachers who I've met with or who have reached out to me. I've copied many of you on that correspondence. I've also been in contact with Jeff Knight and Andrew Mizurelli from MTI, and really said that we're looking at three things. One, making sure that we understand the full, um, scope of compression. It, it's, it's more than letters and numbers and how it converted. We want to make sure that if we are going to make frame shift adjustments, that it's one that's not going to lead to further inequities, and one that we can stand by so that we don't have to find ourselves continually in this position, you know, in, in future years. The second then is for us to look at, at what level, and how do we want to make the fix? Uh, you know, and how are we gonna, you know, ensure that by doing that, it's gonna lead to a, a salary schedule that's fair and equitable, and, and one that we can stand by? And then third is the financial impact, and the impact that will have on our budget. Um, I think some of the speakers tonight pointed out that there were a group, a group of student services folks who were adjusted last year. Um, you know, that was a, a very small number compared to, you know, the number who would be up for an adjustment like this. Not saying one is more important than the other. I am saying that one is more of a financial investment, um, if you just look at the total. So we're in that process right now. We will have a presentation team at the OWG timeline this week, and we'll have a, um, and we're beginning to share information internally on some of our findings in terms of studying salary compression.
All right, thank you, Board Member Saravo. Okay, uh, Board Member, and do I see your hand going up, Board Member Moldrow? I apologize. Should I go to Board Member Moldrow first? Okay, Board Member Moldrow.
I want to thank the team that, for the work that went into this budget, including my fellow board members. Um, our priorities are significantly reflected in this budget in terms of our investment in staff, in terms of our investment in, uh, stability in our district, um, in terms of our investments in safety. And I, I would have a hard time at this point saying that all of these investments go far enough. But I think we have to be tremendously grateful that we have the ability to make that. And we have to have a, a level of reverence for what it took for our community to trust us with these resources, um, and make sure that we're positioned well to, to do the, the work of stewarding our young people's academic and intellectual achievement. I hope that we, we can have a, a real and nuanced conversation about the entirety of, of this budget and how we got here as a group. Um, we, we have been talking about this budget since last fall. Um, and, and it reflects conversations that each of us had absolutely, um, a lot of ability to influence and participate in. And it's because of that that I'm voting in favor of, of this budget. This budget is, uh, a reflection of our own leadership. Uh, it is a moral document. It, it speaks to what we prioritize. Um, I want to talk a little bit about the twenty point three nine percent increase in our budget, which is eighty-one million, eighty-one point one million dollars. Um, and so I'd like to, uh, address a few questions at our administration in terms of that additional resource. And I'd like to, um, start that, those questions by, by thanking our community for voting in favor of our referendums last, last fall. This budget would not be possible, um, without the support of our community and the public. Bob, is it possible for you to talk us through that eighty-one point one million dollar increase?
Good evening. Yes, it's very possible. Um, I want to just use the budget books so you have it in front of you. If you go to page forty-five and forty-six, it's what's, uh, commonly referred to as the deep-gab budget adoption format. It's actually what's required in law for us to publish and talk about in terms of expenditures and increases. Um, if you look at page forty-six, the bottom, talks about the eighty-one point one million dollar tax levy increase. I want to start out by saying, um, that, that levy increase is in part, a large part, uh, directly related to the nineteen point five percent decrease in general school aids this year. Under revenue limits, as your general school aids declines, to maximize your annual revenues under revenue limits, the property tax levy has to be increased. So first and foremost, that's a huge, uh, factor in terms of the increased property tax levy. Uh, but if you start up on, uh, general fund ten in terms of the forty-eight point three million dollars, part of that increase is that loss of about twelve million dollars in general school aids. The other part of that increase is the thirty million dollars approved by the voters, uh, in the November twenty-four referendum for this year. Um, if you go down to the Fund Thirty Thirty-Nine Debt Service Fund, that thirty point one million dollars is reflective of the annual amount that we have, and we talked about as part of the five hundred and seven million dollars facility referendum. That, that is what, um, we're expecting to be the annual payment for the next twenty-two years to pay that debt off as it comes onto the books. But that's the first year of that full annualized impact of the referendum to pay those bonds back. Um, the Board, um, made an increase of two million dollars on Capital Forty-One, which is ongoing facility maintenance capital improvement fund, uh, to maintain the buildings that we have now and take care of any issues that come up that are not impacted by that five hundred and seven million dollar referendum. And then really a slight increase, six hundred thousand, in our community service fund levy to primarily reflect, um, adjusting the MSCR employee wages upwards to be reflective of what , um, the district employees have received in terms of base wages and CPI increases. So that's in total, the eighty-one dollar levy increase.
Thank you so much for that thorough explanation of that eighty-one million increase. In terms of the district's expenses, what are the most significant increases in cost? And so I, I want to speak a little bit about our investment in staff. However, if there are other very significant, um, increases you'd like to speak to, um, I'm happy to hear about them. I, I hope that we're able to highlight our investment in wages and compensation, as well as our investment in healthcare.
Uh, yes, clearly, the largest part of the increases in terms of our operating budget, which is reflective of twenty-five, twenty-six, are salary and benefits. They now comprise, on this budget, eighty-one percent. We've gone up a few percentage points over the last few years, primarily reflective of two things, the rising health insurance costs, and also the CPI wage increase, base wage increase, along with the step and lane increases. Um, step and lanes in salary about, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but all funds about twenty million dollars to fund that CPI and step increase. And then, um, uh, the health benefit increase was, pull the spreadsheet up, about, um, twelve to fifteen million dollars in terms of health benefits increase, uh, for twenty-five, twenty-six. So those are the two largest, um, pieces, uh, increase. In addition to that, we add custodial staff to maintain the comprehensive high school renovation, um, and the need to, uh, spend more money on maintaining our facilities. We also expanded the four-year-old kindergarten options in the state and continued the lower class sizes for kindergarten through first grade. So those are the major staff increases in terms of, of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
I think it's important for folks who have been following our last few meetings to acknowledge that we very recently discussed that our enrollment had actually decreased. And so part of what our budget reflects is that we have fewer students and more staff. And my hope is, is that there, there are really significant benefits to having a district that is, has more staff and more stability within our staffing, um, and fewer, fewer students. Can you speak to kind of what folks can expect in terms of, um, having additional staff with a smaller student, slightly smaller student population?
Yeah, let's, let's stress the slightly smaller student population, although there was a decrease in the FTE from revenue limits. although there was a decrease in the FTE from revenue limits this third Friday compared to last third Friday. When you compare the two basic three-year rolling averages, our current three-year rolling average compared to the prior four-year rolling average, it's only a difference of 10 FTE. So for revenue purposes, we're essentially flat. Now technically, we are in declining enrollment. We were, we were a little, little less than the third Friday September count this year compared to last year. But it's, it's pretty flat when it comes to revenue and calculations. Now the question in terms of the, of the class sizes and the decline, to put it in perspective, think about, we have too fewer students per school building. That's kind of the context of that drop in the FTE count. So it's, it's fairly marginal. I will say we were projecting more. And what that means is we have more schools that are still within the range of the board's minimum class size policy, but closer to the minimum than the optimum. Now, so it's still within the policy, but we do have additional staff in smaller class sizes compared to the prior year in terms of the staff that were provided. We have used about 16 of the 20 unallocated staff in terms of specific enrollment increases and the needs at specific schools since the June budget included those 20 unallocated. We'll continue, as we always do, to monitor any changes in the student population to meet their needs with the remaining four unallocated as the school year progresses.
Thank you very much. Is there anything that we have cut from our, our budget that you think we as a board need to be aware of or our community needs to be aware of in terms of services or supports or community partnerships that are no longer going to be available to our young people?
I don't think we've, well, I don't think. I know we have not cut any services. I think the area that we continue to monitor in terms of a need, which is not unique to Madison, is really the mental health, the student services, the nursing needs of our students. That's an area that clearly the pandemic has identified as a need where we need to continue to invest. And I think we continue to look at that. The hope is the state will continue to provide a little bit more state aids in that area in terms of mental health supports, but we continue to monitor. But there's not been any major reductions.
Yeah, President Nichols, Board Member Maldro, one thing I would add is one thing that I think the community sometimes might feel is a cut. There are a lot of changes in education too. So as we continue to innovate, try new things, students are trying, you know, maybe taking different courses or participating in new opportunities. It can sometimes diminish some of those longstanding programs, classes, what have you that we've offered. So it can feel like a cut, even though it's based more on student interest.
Can I ask specifically about the partnership circles of support?
The direct partnership circles of support?
Yes, are we continuing to invest in that partnership?
I yield the floor.
Good evening. The question was, are we still supporting and working with natural circles of support? This year, we are not in a formal partnership with them. They still do some support at East High School through community engagement and through the MSC, but we don't have a formal partnership with them this year.
Is there a reason why?
Not any specific reason outside of last year. There was a partial partnership with them through the Office of Student Services, Nancy Mulfentner's office. And then this year with adjustments to funding different priorities, the decision was that the partnership would not be funded. I know they worked on a couple grants together to do, to see if they could get outside funding, but as of right now, there isn't a formal partnership.
Thank you so much for those explanations. I think there is a lot to dive into in terms of this budget. My last question is for Dr. Bothard. This is kind of your, your first budget beginning to end. I am curious how you think it speaks to you are as a leader and the investments you're most excited to champion this year.
Yeah, certainly my first one beginning to end, but I'm looking at Bob and his team who aren't here, who are so responsible for doing such great work, really fortunate to have the leadership we do in our Office of Financial Services. You know, I think for me, it starts with 4K. I think you all have heard me from, you know, the time I was just getting to know you and coming here and so excited that MMSD has really grown in terms of 4K. I see it as such an important introduction into our district, into community, into the way that staff and principals and teachers receive students and their families. And I just can't think of any more important investment that we're making right now. And it's also part of an enrollment strategy as well. A lot of, a lot of the things that we're investing in are, are going to continue to be tied with what are, what is it that our families and our students desire? And how can we make that match? How can we make that commitment so that they know this isn't going to be here today, gone tomorrow? It's a sustained commitment. So those are the kinds of things laying the groundwork that I think will be really important to guide, not just my values, but the values of our strategic plan, our vision, our mission, and what we learn and hear from our community.
I want to thank you very much for investing in our educators and preparing a budget that prioritizes equity. I am tremendously proud to have the opportunity to vote in favor of this budget. I'm tremendously grateful for the work of my board colleagues in crafting this budget. I think we have a lot of work to do and this is a budget that reflects pointing us in the right direction. Thank you very much for your work. I know that we went into this budget with a tremendous amount of instability and a lot of unknowns. And, and your team had to be particularly agile to, to work with us and get us to this point. This is a balanced budget. And I, I think that's something we, we need to recognize and celebrate.
Thank you, Board Member Maldro. Board Member Castro.
Thank you. I just want to start off by, by thanking my, my colleagues and partners on the board and in particular Bob and the Finance Department and HR. And just, and especially the taxpayers and folks who supported the referendum this past year. This budget would not be possible without that. So the fact that we managed to reach full cost of living adjustment, target smaller class sizes at the lower level, and I believe this is the single largest increase in 4K sections in a given year since we started investing in full day 4K. I think it's something to be remarkably proud of. I know that we have a lot of work for the next cycle. But one last thing before I yield the floor. This is a balanced budget and it's the first budget in a few years that does not utilize one-time funding, which is a big deal. And more than that, thanks to Bob and smart decisions that we've made, we have limited the impact to the local taxpayer here. So I think that's something to be proud of. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Castro. Vice President Pearson, I saw your hand earlier. I'm not sure, did you still want, did you have a question or comment on the budget or the motion?
No, my questions were answered. Thank you.
Okay. Then I'm going to go to Board Member Soravo and then come back to you, Board Member Vandermeulen, and get you, Board Member Mosnir Feltham. Hopefully I'll have a comment too to close it out. Board Member Soravo.
Thank you, President Nichols. I was wondering if you could kind of explain, our public schools are the place where we get to have our kids who need special education. We get their needs met. It's something that separates us out from private schools. However, our legislature makes it very hard for us to break them into the budget when they don't compensate us fully. Can you speak to what we are currently receiving for this year and how we stand with it? And going into next year, what are we going to be preparing for? Since we're always planning ahead of time, what are we going to think ongoing in the current state of things?
You're, you're right. Public school districts and independent charter schools, which are considered LEAs under federal law, are responsible to implement IDA and to implement the IEP plans for individual students. Private schools are not. So the state, which, which helped us in terms of balancing the budget, the state did provide additional resources for special education categorical aid reimbursement, which allowed us to reduce the transfer from the general fund to cover those expenditures in Fund 27. The state budget included a 42% reimbursement rate this year and 45% the next year. However, it's not a some sufficient appropriation. It's some certain appropriation. So whether we get anywhere close to 42%, which means to be seen as this year unfolds in terms of running the final reports and the aid reimbursement. As an example, 24, 25, we were told it would be 33% reimbursement. It ended up being 30.6% reimbursement. So that's something we'll have to continue. My team will continue to monitor throughout this year. In terms of how the state funds the private school voucher program and the special need programs, the Wisconsin Parental Choice Private School program, it's a straight deduct in terms of our state aid. So what the legislature said to school districts, if we're going to take this aid from your eligibility pot of aid and we're going to pay private school vouchers. And so as a school district, you have to decide whether you want to cut your programming in an equal amount or if you want to raise property taxes or if you want to use one-time revenues to cover those expenditures. And so this year, that amount has gone up again. Just doing some comparisons for today, so let me, what's my line? I got a spreadsheet for that. Let me pull that up. So our final amount in terms of our aid reductions in 24, 25, ended up being $11.7 million. Part of that was 5.6 million aid reduction for the independent charter schools. Now, those are funded a little bit different, quite a bit different than the private voucher schools. So we count the students that enroll in independent charter schools within our revenue limits. And so they're built into those base levy numbers I shared with you. But our aid is reduced at the end of this year to pay that independent charter school amount back to the state. So that'll continue to happen this year. This year, we're about $6 million compared to last year's 5.6 million for private school vouchers. It's going in total, last year, private school vouchers and the independent charters was 11.7. This year, with our projections, it's expected to be 13.4 million. And so that's a $1.7 million increase that we're going to be taxing and then losing our aid at the end of this year. In total, the private school voucher program, Wisconsin Parental Choice Program is estimated to cost us $6.6 million. So part of that levy that I shared with you, that general fund levy, $6.6 million of that, we will have our aid reduced at the end of this year for Wisconsin Parental Choice Program students. That is our residents who choose to attend the private school and participate in the program. And last year's, the special needs scholarship program, it was $622,000. That's going up, the estimate this year of, to be just short of $837,000. So combined, it's at $13.4 million, which is a $1.7 million increase. Does that make sense? Cloud numbers.
I'm going to thank you for being very on top of all of the budget concerns that we have, and bear regards to that and being able to articulate it in a manner where we can appreciate, but all the work that went into the referendum and all the, all the, all the things that we get to do in our public schools that our voters are there. I'm very much into being transparent about where funds are going when it comes down to that. So thank you very much for giving us an overview of what we are looking at.
Okay, do you want to go, Board Member? Thank you, Board Member Vandermeulen, Board Member Feltham.
Sure, I'm just going to be so Blair about it. I think a lot of you know I'm teaching again this year for the first time in a long time. And one of the assignments that we're working on right now, like it was due today, I have my students doing an educational history timeline of their educational experiences. So these are sophomores, juniors, and seniors mostly. And so I've been hanging with my students and they're reminiscing about their experiences in school. Here about their first year of kindergarten and their transition to middle school and their high school and all this different stuff. You know, I think this school is so, public school is so beautiful. If you look at this big number, I want to take a moment to remind people, I know we all think about it a lot, but it's really, it's like, it's so, it's so beautiful and it's so special. And we have a lot of room because there are a lot of, it's very similar. And families don't have excellent experiences. But I think that we can all be really proud of what this big number represents for all these young people and their families who may, when they be reminiscing themselves or perhaps giving public comments about their 30 years of service as a teacher at MMSD after their time. So I feel really, big appreciation for the whole.
All right, Board Member Vandermeulen, thank you, Board Member Mosnir Feltham.
Yes, just wanted to ask on the, we haven't used the 21 unallocated, correct?
We've used about 16 of the 20 unallocated in terms of allocations out to individual school buildings.
Now, I just have one other question on that. Do we fully, do schools request it and we decide it? Or do we do it, or does admin decide it? How exactly is it done? This is a question I've had for a long time, but never had the guts to ask it.
It's a combination of factors. School principals will put requests in in terms of the need. We use an allocation model that's based on student attendance by classroom at the individual schools. And then we apply the Board of Education policy in terms of minimum and maximum AGR, non-AGR. That's how we make our decisions in terms of the priorities.
And then I have one last question, one comment. Last question is that can we, for example, assign someone like temporarily for, like an LTE for a few months? Like if a school is under a crisis or a problem or a situation, how does that work? And how can a school do that?
We do do that. We do give temporary allocations, which are generally basically an LTE to help out school populations. It happens by principals approaching the department heads here or their associate, area associate superintendents. And they bring that forth to a group of us that meet regularly on allocations. And then we look at the factors in terms of, is this a school building that's at the board minimum class sizes or are they close to the maximum or optimum? What kind of resources do they have available within base funding? And then if we think it's not sufficient and we have unallocated, which we have available, then we will allocate either full-time or LTE tempers or in-class.
I really appreciate it. It was a question that I've had for a long time, as I said, just didn't have the guts to ask it. And my one comment I forgot to say earlier is, I forgot to say Happy Principal Awareness Month. I am very happy that I just did my video for it and my 20-second video. And I did that right before the board meeting, so I just wanted to get that in. Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any other questions. I would also just like to echo some of the comments of appreciation that I've heard my colleagues express. There are a couple of things that stand out to me about this budget and not just the final budget, but actually the process. This is one of the first budgets that we're arriving to in October that I can recall since I've been on the board that we were able to get to the maximum kind of base wage increase pretty early on in the budget development process. And I think there was a lot of strong collaboration and appreciation from our Madison Teachers Incorporated. And I think there was a lot of, I was happy to see the, the way in which we went about doing. doing that. I think that we have worked really hard, especially with rising costs for health insurance, and, and some of these other things that are really out of our control, to prioritize our employees and to try to maintain as much as possible. And another thing that I'm, I'm proud of is that, you know, when I look at the staffing plan that's on pages 23 and 24 of the budget book, you know, there are increases out at the school level. And I, I think that sometimes we, we talk a lot about wages and benefits, and we don't really talk about how we are prioritizing where adults are. And so, you know, what you see in the 25, 26 budget is there is a small reduction in district-wide administration that I know Dr. Gothard, you know, kind of went through in your first year here, like some strategic reenlightenment about the choices around that. There are 19 more teachers out across our buildings. There are 24 more educational assistants. There are 11 more custodians. And I, I think that although, although those numbers may not seem huge across our entire district, the fact that when you compare it to previous years, the fact that we are allocating and reprioritizing adults being in our buildings, where young people are, I think also says a lot about what we value. And so I appreciate just the work that's been done even out at the building level, and at the district level, to really shore that up and make that a priority. And to Board Member Castro's point, I, I also, I'm really proud of the fact that we have a balanced budget, and that we are in good position as stewards of the referendum dollars that this community has said they trust us with, to move the district forward. So just, I want to kudos to everybody who's worked on this budget, and I know a lot of it, Bob, has been through your team, and Dr. Gothard, through your vision, and it's a reflection also of like the hard work that's happening out at schools, about how to provide as much adult stability in our, in our schools, and, and folks, you know, a lot of the public comment tonight even around, not just compression, but about the role that our veteran employees play, and our new employees feeling proud to be here, like all of that's happening out in schools, and that's a critical piece, I think, of us having a strong budget as well. So I, I just wanted to say I'm really proud of this budget. Any further comments? All right. Hearing and seeing none, student representative, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And Maya, I can't, all right, thank you. Those opposed? All right. That motion passes 6-1. All right. We'll move on to the second motion. I further move that the board certify the 2025, 2026 all funds tax levy in conjunction with the 2025, 2026 budget in the total tax levy amount of $478,618,790, which consists of the following specific subcomponents. The Fund 10 General Fund, $403,57,004. The Fund 30, 39 Referendum Approved Debt Service, $49,797,260. The Fund 41 Capital Expansion Fund, $7 million. Fund 80 Community Services Fund, $18,764,524, for a total tax levy of $478,618,790.
Second, Maya.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Pearson. Any questions or comments on the second motion? All right. Seeing none. Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right. All those opposed? All right. That's one. So that passes 6-1. All right. Bob, I believe we have finalized the budget and the tax levy finalization. Thank you so much. All right. We will now move on to the consent agenda. I move that the Board of Education adopt and approve all of the motions set forth in Section 10 of the electronic agenda prepared for the October 27, 2025 regular school board meeting, exactly as said motions are written. By voting affirmatively on this motion, a board member expresses his, her, or their affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated, hereby subject to any express separations that have been made by any member of the school board.
Second.
All right. Are there any separations? All right. Seeing none. What was that? All right. Student Representative Lee, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Maya.
All right. Looks like that passes unanimously. We will now move on to other items. We don't have any other business items on the agenda, so we'll go into reports to the board. I can start with the City County Schools Collaborative Committee. We have not met, and so that concludes the report. Student Senate, Student Representative Lee.
Student Senate meets bi-weekly on Wednesdays here, and we've had two meetings since the last regular Board of Education meeting. We have finalized the executive cabinet interviews and are currently informing all the applicants of the results. Middle schools have been nominated by their principals and have started to attend meetings, and both committee, committees, student wellness, and education equity are currently creating year-long agendas with all their goals. And at the past meeting, guest speaker Gina Aguglia from the district has come in to speak about a potential school safety video that the students want to create. Thank you.
Nice. All right. Thank you. Madison School and Community Recreation Advisory Committee, Board Member Moser Feltham.
Hey, thank you, President Nichols. So MSCR is doing some strategic planning, right in line with MMSD's larger strategic planning. And as the first, at the first stage of that, MSCR is asking community members for input about their vision for MSCR and public recreation in Madison. Community members are encouraged to complete the community input survey, which can be found at mscr.org. The Winter and Spring MSCR Program Guide will be available on Sunday, November 16, and registration will open on Monday, December 1st.
Thank you. Does the Policy Committee have any report for this month?
Yeah, I can just report really quick. October 10, we had our board retreat, in which the board adopted the process, the formal process, to review policy, as well as a list of policies that the board would like to focus on in this coming quarter. And so we, as a policy committee, met on the 17th to talk through each of those policy focus points from the board, and we'll continue our conversation on the 31st, as we have started going, working through our process. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you to the Policy Committee and Board Members Pearson and Vander Mullen. We have nothing to report from the Board Governance Committee. There's no other old or new business, so at this point, I will take a motion to adjourn, which I just heard from Board Member Vander Mullen. All those in favor of adjournment? Okay, thank you. I second you by Board Member Mulholland. All those in favor of adjournment? Student Representative Lee?
Aye.
All others?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned.